14, 2020. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance, if you would, Mr. Trainer.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, without end.
I'm clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Larambs.
Here.
Commissioner Savoy.
Here.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Here.
Commissioner Trainer.
Here.
Chairman Martin.
Here. Do we have any additions to the agenda? Take a motion to accept the agenda that has been so moved. Support motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes. Approval of county board minutes from August 17th, 2023.
Remove approval. Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion passes. Correspondents proceed to the clerk's office, page seven.
Mr. Chair, I move that we acknowledge the correspondence and forward as appropriate.
What, support? Support. To forward these, accept them and forward them as. There is the one in here with the solar.
The resolution is.
Okay.
We have it there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion passes. Public comments, do we have any public comments? It's a three-minute limit per person, fifteen minutes per subject. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now?
Yeah, you come up here and, because otherwise they won't be able to hear you back there. We probably won't either.
All right.
Well, first and foremost, thank you for letting me address the board and for all your, your hard work and civil service. Dave already reoccurring licensed land surveyor, well, I'll back up. Everybody's invited to burger night at the PFW, you know, if anybody wants to come down, but the resolution in the records here has stated and where their, where their place, I realize that that incurred a cost and I, and I thank you for bringing those records here to the annex building downstairs and I've been talking with Patty Wine Rice. I'm also the chapter representative for our society, so we're working with the, our county surveyor and his assistants to try to get access to those records and that the access is available to not only, you know, people here in Chippewa County, but other surveyors or, or surveying engineering firms that want and need access to that during regular business hours are still kind of like to bring that issue forward and if somehow working with Gigi and Gigi's awesome, if you could keep supporting her with the, the scanning of our public records. You know, and the issue of title, this is what I brought up in our last meeting. You might see these things, title lock, insurance and stuff like that. If the county commissioners could guarantee that all of your citizens' titles are guaranteed through the registered deeds, that would be huge and open and transparent with scanned documents, I think you're on the right direction and thank you for all, you know, your capitulations to me, which is the standard of the law. But to, to that point, I haven't seen where the records are yet. I have a standing list of, of the county surveyors and the records they audit, that ought to be there and, and I'll follow up with that, but if we could, the more of that, we can get scanned and available to people however you want to charge it, to save them and save the personnel costs of having to maintain it. To that point, my next point would be I had the police called on me here recently and what I want to bring up, Public Act 115. The forfeiture of claims and damages to survey by his entry or for, shall forfeit any and all claims, damages and injuries to his person and equipment while on the lands or waters unless damage or injury is caused by intentional torturous conduct of others. So if you guys would put together a resolution to say that a surveyor can practice his, his profession in Chippewa County without, you know, suffering the intentional torturous conduct of others.
Ten seconds, sir.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you again. Come on down and have a burger with us.
Thanks. Thank you for your service too.
My pleasure.
All right, any more public comment? Anthony, we have anybody out there?
No public comments on Zoom.
Our public comment closed once, twice. Public comment closed, please. New business, board canvass your seats. In seventeen year bracket, gentlemen?
Go. Skip the administrators.
Oh, did I? Oh, geez, oh, gee. Well, that's because I know it was such good, Rosie knows.
Yeah, it's just the, the monthly reports from the Health Department, Sheriff's Department, Animal Control and the Veterans Affairs, nothing spectacular.
I think that's awesome.
We like board. Bad's happening. All right, now. We'll turn to this board canvass your seats, page seventeen, back. And we'll leave a full call vote here, correct? Correct. Yes, sir.
So it's one from each party.
Right, so we have a letter from the chair, chairs from each party, right? Can, can we just review that real quick with the Democratic local chair recommended, which two? Because we have three, so two, two and one is an alter, alter, right?
Correct.
I think they just gave you a list of names, Kathy, this.
It is attached, what they, what they gave me. That's great, two. Nineteen and twenty.
Kelly. Well, I mean, next one. I saw the letters, I just trying to remember.
We only get two, right?
Yeah.
Well, they get two and an alternate. Yeah, and what, what we usually do is we try to respect the wishes of the county chairs, I just want to make sure I'm doing that right.
They each gave you three with not a, you know, they didn't recommend any of the three, they just said pick from these three. And then Kathy is asking that Mr. Jacobson be returned as the alternate just in case, because he did not seek reappointment, but he is a good member for Kathy when she needs to meet with the Board of Canvassers.
His name is not.
No, because Kathy asked for it in her memo.
It is in.
He is, I saw it.
Yeah, it is in Allison's, what Allison submitted. He sat on the board for ten years and approximately ten years and chooses not to.
Oh, very time, but. Page nineteen, where it's highlighted there. With his experience. I knew I just read it like half an hour ago, so.
Well, I read it yesterday.
And it's also on, it's also on twenty, it's also on page twenty in your packet too with the.
Okay.
As the alternate, so.
Okay, let me try a different approach, they, who's, who's currently serving as board canvassers?
Um, no.
None of them?
None of them, that, that they submitted, no.
Okay, so these are all new names?
These are all new names, except Richard has the experience and he chooses not to, for the alternate for the Democratic Party. He chooses not to.
And.
Full time.
Um, and we only choose one from each?
Correct.
Okay, I. And they, and the chairs didn't recommend a particular one, just here's three names?
Yeah. Kind of surprising they didn't recommend somebody, but obviously there's reason, the, the biggest question I have is on twenty-one, where it talks about Mr. Twardy, are they looking at him as being an alternate? On page twenty-one?
Mr. Twardy sits on there.
He's, he's not up, correct?
Okay, well, I'm just, like I said.
Oh, okay, so he's, he's on, he's going to continue to be on, his appointment just isn't up at this time?
No, Mr. Twardy's appointment is up.
Why isn't his name on here? Oh, because he wasn't?
I don't, the chair, I submit the letter to the chairs and they give me names, I, I don't know why they didn't put his name on. It's the chair, it was a different Republican chair than in, in the past and maybe, I don't know why.
I'm wondering, go with his name there, did, did they want him? As a Republican Party want an alternate for their side too? I, I guess that's my question, that's why I don't understand why Twardy is on this.
Where, excuse me, where do you see?
Page, page twenty-one, please see the attached reminder.
Alright, so, so what I'm surmising out of this is that Mr. Twardy, he'd like to continue to serve, but the Republican chair did not put his name down as one of the recommended names.
That's what I see.
Correct, he, he did speak to me at a meet, the last meeting. And I relayed that to the Republican chair, but the three names he submitted were, and that, so he's not a candidate.
And, and we don't, we don't want to table this so we get more clarification.
That is correct though, what you're saying, he, I, I recommended that he does a really good job and he did say he would like to continue, but when he submitted the names to me, he didn't put his name on there. Mr. Republican Chair.
So where, where, where do we want to?
I don't know.
Is there a deadline on this if we table it for?
Um, I think we can table, we can table it because if they take the November first, so we can do it in October, I believe their, the position is up to November first and we don't have elections until November seventh, so we can table this.
Is it, is it not past practice that they usually kind of? They give a a preferred candidate that they would like?
They always did in the past, correct.
Yeah, they're saying we'd like to have this person. And they're, and in this case, what they just did in both cases, they said here's three names.
Certainly in the, that is correct, certainly the Republican Party always gave up. They prefer, they recommended this person.
So we can either, we can just choose from the three if we want to, or, I mean, because that's what they're telling us to do.
That's what.
They're saying any of the three is acceptable.
Correct.
Do we choose an alternate too?
Do you, do you usually have an alternate as well or not?
It, there was a couple times where we weren't, weren't meeting, we couldn't get a quorum together, so I started asking if you could put an alternate in there, so I didn't have to come back and ask.
It was that one?
We have a short window to canvas after.
And was that, that person nonpartisan, like a survey regardless?
No, we had, I believe we had one on each, 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 sorry, because we have to have, we can't have them all. Like if a Republican is missing.
And the gentleman that was that, Jacobson, was it?
Richard Jacobson.
Okay, so was he on the Republican side or the Dem side?
Dem side.
He wants to be an alternate.
Right. Because he's, he's been on the board and is it's time for new blood in there.
But he'd be happy to be an alternate.
That's exactly what he told me at the last meeting. And Allison did put that in her.
So we have, I, I'm just saying, we have the, the option of choosing from any of these three names on each side and presumably the parties will be happy and then we could also, if we chose to add on an alternate on each side and that would make it better for, for our clerk, I believe that she has alternates that, that are available and if needed. You want to try it or you want to chair it or?
Table it.
Table it.
He will chair whatever.
I'll be honest, I don't really know the, the Democratic side.
I don't either.
I know Marlene used to be a county employee, so I know her. Actually, I should back up, I don't know her, I, I know who she is. But the other two, I'm.
So if we table or if you table this, do you want me to send them one of our applications of interest so you can get the background on them and then make the decision or? This is always, this, this appointment always gets like this because it's always a little confusing.
Actually, I, I think I'd rather the party make the decision for us, we you know, but what you say is, is, is truth, I mean, they said all three are good, they're good with all three, so.
Yeah.
But Kathy's got to follow the MCL and the MCL says that she gets the nominees from them.
Correct, and I could, I could be, I could address them again and say that, that the board would be interested in a little more information and which, who they would recommend.
As an alternate too.
As an alternate also, before they voted on it, I could do that if they prefer.
I.
I just said I needed three names that, because that's what the law states.
Could we choose, okay, i- i- I'm just, if we wanted to, could we add an alternate that's not on this list or would the law not allow that?
I don't think we, it would allow that.
Okay, so we couldn't even add Mr. Jacobson, Jacobson as an alternate? Because his name is not on our list.
Yes, it's on page twenty and, and from Allison, from the Democratic Party.
She did.
Not on my tally sheet, but.
Right, because he's an alternate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make the motion now, be careful. Want support to table if we choosing the Board of Canvassers? Any discussion, we don't, we don't.
No discussion on table motion. All right, but we do have to vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes. Hopefully it's more direction from both parties. Take care of this next one. Okay, resolution twenty-three dash twenty, opposing legislation, granted local control for solar and wind development space twenty-two.
Frankly, this is another overreach from the legislature that it's going to tell counties that your local zoning and your local wishes mean nothing if this is to pass. It's I'm sorry, but we, we're seeing an awful lot of this out of this legislature and it's, it's not very good. And this is a resolution telling them, don't pass this bill. That's a nutshell.
We just had the subject.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how that's resolved yet or if it's not resolved, I don't know if anyone knows.
I think it should be dead for the year.
Oh, thank goodness.
But, but they're pushing this.
Come back with it next year.
And, um, pay family leave.
Oh, yeah.
And if something else here were trying, it, you know, works, but they're, they are looking to generally, suspicion is they're going to generally.
Yeah, they are. Which. I don't understand why they're journey early this year, but usually you only do that in years that you need to go out, campaign and run for election. Not enough off here, so.
But.
So that's the resolution, I would move that we approve the resolution.
Support, motion and support to approve resolution twenty, twenty-three dash twenty, opposing. But frankly, our rep, Philance. Any discussion? All call vote, please.
Commissioner Larambs.
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Chairman Mark.
Yes. Standing committee reports, next finance claims and accounts, Commissioner Sloy.
Sir. The regular meeting on Chippewa County Board of Finance Claims and Accounts Committee was held on Tuesday, September four, twenty, claim three at this location, five thirty PM. Quorum present. And the agenda was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Larambs to add Minne Michigan outside of eight D. Envoys. Period, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Move all off the agenda, moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Shackleton to approve the agenda as amended on voice, vote, motion, period, I move.
Support.
Support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Public comment, there was none, correspondence information items was presented. Agenda items, Health Department twenty-three, twenty-four budget and contracts moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve the twenty-three and twenty-four Health Department budget as presented authorizing the health officer's signature on various maintenance and support contract, IT equipment travel totaling with the county allocation, employees, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support for Health Department budget contract, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Health Department, it was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Larambs to approve and authorize the Chippewa County Health Department's mission statement, organizational chart and policies and fee schedules as presented on voice, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Support, motion and support, Health Department mission statement, organization chart, annual policy and fee schedules, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Again, Health Department Public Health Infrastructure Grant moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize the Chippewa County Health Department to save two hundred fourteen thousand three hundred eighty dollars from the strengthening public health workforce and infrastructure in Michigan grant, which is part of the CDC to spark public health needs, employees, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support for Health Department Public Health infrastructure grant of two hundred fourteen thousand plus, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Probate court childcare moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Martin to prove and authorize signature of the county childcare budget summary as presented for October first, twenty twenty-three to September thirty of twenty twenty-four, and voice, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for probate care, childcare and DA test, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Friend of the court, moved by Commissioner Larambs, supported by Commissioner Trainer to prove and authorize signature for five-year title to provide a D agreement as presented on voice, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Support, motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Animal control shelter contract and plan moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Martin to authorize the contract with RB Construction Corporation not to exceed one million two hundred thirty-eight thousand to approve the plans as presented on voice, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Support, support. Motion and support, animal control shelter, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
District Court Mental Health Court Grant and subcontractor moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to prove and authorize District Department of Health Grant Coordination Contract with Michelle Shaw, Elaine, and for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and voice, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Close, pardon. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Next is Fifty-eighth Circuit Court Drug Court Contracts, moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Larambs to approve and authorize Fifth Circuit Circuit Drug Court Contracts for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three for ML Consultants, Great Lakes Recovery Center Incorporated and Premier Biotech Corporation fees as presented on voice, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for Fifty-eighth Circuit Court Drug Court Contracts, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Chair's Office Storage Lease EDC moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve and authorize the lease between Chippewa County Sheriff's Office and Chippewa County EDC for the use of Building four twenty-nine, an annual plus, plus annual utilities on a voice, vote, motion, period. So move.
Support. Motion and support for facility storage lease, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Chair's Office three eight hundred megahertz portable radios moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve it and authorize a purchase of three eight hundred APX six hundred six thousand portable radios at a price not to exceed fourteen thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars fifty-three cents from Motorola Solutions and making necessary budget amendment to the ORB grant, employees, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for the three portable radios, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Administration release snow plowing and removal of RFQs moved by Commissioner Larambs, supported by Commissioner Shackleton to release RFQs for snow plowing and removal, employees, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for the RFQs for snow plowing, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Administration opioid, opioid information, no action was necessary, just for review, administration correction from August fifteenth finance claims and accounts, it was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to change August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three motion paying the bills to indicate the Commissioner Larambs abstaining, employees, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for correcting the fifteenth minute, any discussion?
I got a question, I voted on this or should I have seen?
I think you voted on this, I don't see a conflict. Yeah, this, yeah, this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Administration, Minne Michigan closing delayed, moved by Commissioner Larambs, supported by Commissioner Shackleton to approve the closing extension with interest payment if not close by September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, employees, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for Minne Michigan closing delay due to an issue obviously with USDA, any discussion?
Just a quick question. The minutes read that Minne Michigan may offer to pay interest, I, is it a may or is it will or is offering?
It, it's something that Mr. Kelcheck thinks he can get approved without a problem, but he doesn't have the official approval yet because they're still hoping for that twenty-fifth closing.
All right.
But I knew I wouldn't be able to see you guys until October again, so.
I would like the interest.
Good to go, sir. All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Finance claims and accounts moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Trainer to recommend the approval of August coming deals and payroll, general claims, other fund claims, payroll and Health Department claims and payroll on the voice, vote, motion, period, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Committee comments, Commissioner Trainer spoke about Drummond Island situation. Chairman comments, there were none adjourned, it was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Larambs to adjourn, the meeting was adjourned at five fifty-four PM, I would move for the acceptance, distribution of this report.
Support. And support to accept minutes as presented to finance, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes. Uh, next, we have commission reports on meetings as board representatives and general comments, gentlemen, as far as yours.
I've got some, not a lot. The road commission, I went to their meeting this morning, they're going to have six new hires for the winter. Bottom are temporary, just work the winter shift, but they had a couple guys that have left and they're filling those positions with the ones that filled the winter position last year. So as people have been on the payroll before, that one will be filled out.
I like all this talk about snow and snow plowing, I'm not ready.
And they have, all their mowers are up and running right now and they actually have one, they got them all repaired, they got one for a backup, so that's why you're seeing the size of the roads and stuff, finally getting mowed, mowed down. And the prison, went to their meeting yesterday morning, there's one school going out, filling them with corrections officers and there's going to be a new one in October, but they're still short on officers. And then back to the Drummond Island, the DNR contact person is BJ Costa out of Newbury and he will support the grants for the fire, or Sheriff's Department, so they will go over and enforce the ORB trials on Drummond Island and it can, sounds like he can get, the first one was no big deal. The second one, he's thinking he can get him a second grant also on top, so hopefully we can get Drummond kind of tuned in, let the people have some peace over there on the island. And that's all I've got.
No? Nothing? All right, um. As, as far as the, the comments on the, on the titles. I think, you know, whenever we find a problem, we try to repair this as quickly and as well as we can. And in there are always shortcomings, anytime, and so. Um, and, and there are always shortcomings anytime and so.
It's not you, I don't, it's not you, Chippewa County, sir. You're doing a fine job.
We just, work in progress. County government's working progress. Keep working on it, so.
I, you know, I just want to say, I, I got one of those letters and they, they're designed to scare the heck out of you, you know? Like someone might be, you know, taking over your property without you even knowing. The only cure is to give us some money.
Yeah. Let me know how that goes.
Yeah. Well, I filed it, so.
Any, anybody else? I would accept a motion for adjournment.
Move. Support.
Motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, ladies. George Manning.